Good evening, everyone. I am going to call to order the Wednesday, August 20th, 2025 Cedarburg School Board Meeting. And school is, if you can see from the hallways, the classrooms, everywhere, we're getting very excited for another new school year. But this is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and town of Cedarburg, as well as the News Graphic and Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Clark?
All right, with regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on July 16th, 2025, the Budget and Finance Report, which includes the check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. DeRosa, Director of Human Resources, will provide a brief overview of the Personnel Report.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Good evening. On the Personnel Report, we are seeking board approval on the following contracts: Heidi Spingola, the new Teaching and Learning Coordinator in the District Office; Erica Ruck, Special Ed Teacher at Webster; and Allison Zeitzma, 3rd Grade Teacher at Thorson. Departing the district, Samantha Schneider, Custodian, and then retiring from the district after an amazing career. You can give him some props tonight for the air conditioning being on. And his last name has always escaped me, and that's why I've always called him "The Todd", but Todd is retiring as of August 29th. I wish him the best on his next chapter.
Yeah, Todd has been a great asset to the district for years, and we'll miss him, and that is a hard position to replace.
That concludes the Consent Agenda Personnel Report.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
A motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I will second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
There's two errors that I've mentioned to Dr. Clark. I've shared that I think they can fall under scribblers of just not needing an amendment to the motion or anything like that. But just so the board's aware, there's a vote that is marked as 5-0 that should be 5-2, and then my name is just mis-spelled, so put the "A" and the "I", and we're good.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Okay, I will... We all in favor of approving the Consent Agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Oh, okay. The motion passes 6-0-1. Thank you.
All right, Superintendent's Report. This evening, we have three reports for the board. The first is an update regarding the Parkview Playground. We've talked about this a little bit over the last couple of years. I would like to begin by stating how appreciative I am for the tireless work that Lindsay Mon-Govan... Mon-Govan, Von-Govan, past PTO President at Parkview and the Parkview community has put into raising funds, excuse me, funds and arranging for in-kind donations so that a new playground could be installed. It was and is truly amazing. Lindsay is here to say a few words.
All right, my name's Lindsay Mon-Govan. Thanks for having me. We are really, really excited that this dream of ours became a reality so quickly. I think it really shows what a great community we have here, not just our families, but our partners in the community and businesses and things. We're just so very, very grateful for everyone who participated and donated. We had some really great help. A Parkview dad, I don't know if anyone knows the Becker family. Jody Becker is a dad in our district, and he brought us Burke BCI, which is the playground company who makes the playground equipment that you're going to see over at Parkview. And he brought us his company, which I learned a lot about. It's a really cool company. They have a little guy in a wheelchair that tests out all of their equipment, make sure that it's ADA accessible and something he would actually want to play with. He gives them tweaks. So you know, everything that is included in this playground has his stamp of approval, which I think is just amazing. Jody also brought us a lot of donated pieces from his company. So really, we raised $241,000, but we're getting like a $400,000 playground. And that's really in part to Jody and his efforts. So I want to really recognize him for that. We also have some really great businesses from our Parkview family help us get the playground ready. So the Cassandra family, who owns Birchwood Snow and Landscape and Honey Creek Orchard, helped take down everything. The Lit family owns Lawn Scapers. He helped get it all ready, and that was just such a weight lifted off of our shoulders. I wanted to recognize them as well. But we're so excited. We do have the ribbon cutting coming up next week. We hope anyone can come and see and play, and we really think it's just such an asset to not only our school community, but our community at large. So we hope everyone can enjoy it.
Lindsay, what time is the ribbon cutting?
So next week is our sneak peek, so it's going to be held directly after the sneak peek. So 5:50, it's kind of an odd time, but we don't want to lose anybody. So if you come right after the sneak peek at 5:50, we're hoping to get right on board. And we'll have people there do a little ribbon cutting, and we can show anyone around and show some of the really special items that we have there. Any other questions?
Just want to say thank you. I'm sure we can't even begin to imagine the amount of time put into this by so many people. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I can imagine.
Well, and Rick has been super helpful, too, and Dr. Clark, I've learned a lot. So if anyone ever needs another playground, I probably have a lot of pointers for you. But yeah, everyone's been so great, and we're just, we're so happy it's ready. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The second report is the Cedarburg Education Foundation Report that will be shared by CEF President Christina Wagner.
Good evening. Good to see all of you. I am the third member of my family to speak at the board meeting this calendar year, so I feel very included at my house now that my two daughters got to come and speak before I did. So let's see if we're going to get this to work. I'm being patient. Okay, all right. So the reason I came this evening is I see a lot of new faces, not only on the board, but hopefully tuning in online. And my role as President of CEF is to really share the excitement around what we do at CEF and what we do for the district. So our mission is really to support innovation and educational excellence in the Cedarburg School District through community funding. And our vision is to really be a catalyst for student achievement and teacher innovation by maximizing the community investments and engagements. So a little bit like what Lindsay does with the PTO, and we're really to complement and really to support innovation at our schools. So we have a little bit of quick stats here. We were founded in 2006 by a number of parents and business owners in the community. We've had over now 70 board members since 2006. We have a Student Ambassador Program that I'll tell you a little bit about. We've had 21 of them, and eight of them are active this year, this school year. We've had over $700,000 in grants funded, and we do have an endowment that's well over $500,000 now that we work with the Greater Milwaukee Foundation to support and the Greater Cedarburg Foundation as well. So really, our focus is driving that innovation through curriculum across the school district. And we work very closely, of course, with Ally and Jaredin to ensure that we're really focused on strategic initiatives. And obviously, you all see the grants that come through as well before we approve them and implement them. So part of this is not just the Cedarburg or the Cedarburg Education Foundation Board that is important, but also those in the community and at the school district. So every year at our gala, which is our main fundraiser, we want to recognize three different individuals or businesses. And our focus is on the Innovator of the Year. So this is always a teacher award or someone in the district. And the way that we look at this award is really who has submitted the most grants or who's really the most active in grants and who's been awarded the most grants. So those are some of the things that weigh in to this award. The Founder's Award is an award that goes to a former board member. And what we really like here is a lot of our board members, while they have a six, two, three-year terms, so up to six years on the board, they really stay engaged, whether it's through helping giving, give recommendations to other board members or their businesses, our sponsors. There's a wide range of ways that they stay involved, and it's really important because we are a working board. And then the Business of the Year is really businesses that folk that stay consistent and they continue to sponsor the gala and help us to raise money. Again, they're amazing people in the community, and most of the organizations are Cedarburg or Ozaki County-based. I mentioned the Student Ambassador Program. This one is near and dear to my heart. It has really been an incredible program that was started about five years ago, and we've had about 21 student ambassadors. Nearly all of them, once they are on the board, they stay on through their senior year. We do interview the students they apply with a short application process. They do have teacher, teachers write them a letter of recommendation. And then we have them come in towards the end of the school year, normally around AP testing time. So a hard time to come in and interview in front of adults and a couple of their peers, but ask them a few questions. And really cool to see them engage with us and tell us why they want to be a student ambassador and represent their schools and their peers on the board. But really, their focus and their responsibilities are attending the monthly board meetings and then sitting on a committee. So we have six different committees, and they sort of pick which one makes most sense with directionally where they're going in school or where they want to go in college so that they can take away some of those life skills. And then we have them attend and present the awards at the gala, which is really special, I think, to those receiving the awards, is having the students really share the impact that it's having on them, and then they help us work the gala. So the benefits that we really see them having is not only do they get to earn their volunteer hours for school and getting that experience, but they get a lot of leadership opportunity and the public speaking experience as well. So we talked a little bit about grants. We do have a grant application process, and Ally has been an absolute gem to work with and really helping us to improve this process. It is a pretty in-depth process, but what we've done over the last year or so since Ally has been on board is really evaluating the grant opportunities sort of at a summarized level before the teachers go too deep into the weeds on the details and having to go get quotes and all of those things that take a lot of time. We make sure that it's something that is within the board and the school district's strategy, and then they're able to kind of get a temperature check if it fits within the guardrails that we have for the grants, and then we'll have them go through the grant process. We have had more grants submitted this year than we have in nearly totality, which is phenomenal to see the participation from the teachers increase so much that we actually had to kind of pause and say, wow, we may run out of money, which is a great problem to have if we approve all of them. So we really worked together with Jaredin and Ally to prioritize things, to make sure that we have a little bit more of a scorecard, if you will, to make sure we're comparing them, they're not apples to apples. So we want to make sure that we're reaching the most amount of students, that it's having a great deal of impact year over year. Those types of things are definitely playing into the scorecard. We're also looking at establishing a grant cycle so that we can get grants at two different times a year. So if they came in in December and June, then we would have them all at one time so we could do an evaluation versus them kind of rolling in at a steady pace and then not being able to maybe compare them as much as we would like. These are some of the grants that we did approve this year, and we started the check, kind of the check rollout where we go in and we take some photos with the teachers and the students that are involved so that they can see the impact that these aren't small dollar amounts that are being given to the school. And it's fun for the kids to be a little bit more involved and show off a little bit more to the community as well with social media posts and things of that nature. So in order to have these grants, we have to have a gala or a fundraising opportunity. So this year, please save the date. It is on November 8th at the River Club. We, the theme is Rock for Education. So we're going to have a little spin on a formal gala, and you can come in your favorite band t-shirts and sequined skirts or ripped jeans or tent years, best sneakers, whatever floats your boat. But it should be a really great time. So that is again, November 8th at the River Club. And you can find information about sponsorships, big and small. We are selling tables right now, so that is available at cef4kids.org if interested. We also are always in need of amazing board members. As I mentioned, we are a working board, and so we need as many people as we can get that are willing to give their time and help us. So the committees that we do have are the Sponsorship Committee, the Gala Committee, and Silent Auction. We have the Grant Committee, obviously, so that we can put the grants through that group. We have a Finance Committee, a Technology Committee, and a Marketing and Communications Committee as well. So a little bit of something for everyone, and we, you know, more hands make lighter work, right? So if anyone is interested, the email address is below to email us, and we'd love to talk with you about the opportunity to join the board. And this is a current list of our Student Ambassadors and our board members. It is very cool to see that our Student Ambassadors now reach, our youngest is a freshman this year, and this is the first year we've had a freshman. We've been collaborating with the 8th Grade Student Ambassadors at Webster so that we can get them in maybe a touch earlier and bring them on so that it's not just the juniors and seniors represented. So this year, we do have some kids from all grade levels, which is really exciting to see. So with that, thank you very much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I had a question. I have heard great things in the past year about the maybe increased collaboration between Dr. Clark and Ally and CEF, so that's just awesome to hear. I just had a fun question. In your time on the board at CE, at the foundation, what has been like your most interesting or fun or, you know, exciting grant that you've been involved with?
Oh, that's a great question. So I was fortunate enough to have been on the board when the Velo Foundation came to the table, and we were able to work on the Media Center, which is located in the library here. So that has, that was probably the largest and felt very impactful to be able to work with a community company that's very giving, as well as their team from Germany that has actually, they're coming to visit in November. So it's cool that it's had a long-lasting impact, and I think it'll continue to give to the students of Cedarburg for a very, very long time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Christina, you mentioned hoping people were tuning in. Since we're not livestreamed, you started around the six-minute mark of the meeting when it does go up online. So if that's helpful for sharing that out.
Okay.
And then for the different committees, is there one or two that have more of a need than others?
That's a great question. So we've had a handful of people join recently, so we're pretty well-staffed in the Grant Committee right now, because I think it's a really fun committee that people want to be a part of. We are looking for additional help in the Gala Committee and probably technology and sponsorship. So there's definitely some areas that we can start recruiting for and doing some succession planning, for sure.
And can you say that email address one more time?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's info@cef4kids.org. And it's C, the letters, C-E-F, the number four, and then K-I-D-S.org. Yeah, thank you.
I just want to thank you and pass it on to the board as well for all the volunteer hours. The one project, I don't want to point out one, but that Somebody Loves You, Mr. Hatch. I was so impressed by that because of it being balled. You know, it was intergenerational and really got out to the community, and there were so many life lessons for those students that it was just a very impressive project. So thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, the Mr. Hatch Project was one, kudos to Katie Ramos for pushing on that one. And we talk about as fast as a grant could be approved. I mean, it had a time limit. We had a very short window of time, and it was very impressive how quickly the school districts moved, how quick Katie and her team rallied behind it and were able to execute it. And we heard so many amazing stories from the kids, from the older adults that got to participate, from the people that were at CPAC as well. I mean, just, I got chills talking about it. I mean, it was a really, really cool event. So thank you for pointing that out. Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Christina, and the whole CEF Board. They do a phenomenal job. All right, the final report is the Children at Risk of Not Graduating from High School Report. You will find this report in Board Docs. This is an annual report informing the board of the processes used by the district. And that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, it's time to move into public comment. We don't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone interested in speaking? Okay, then we'll move on to recommendations. Dr. Clark?
All right, this evening, we will be presenting six recommendations to the board. The first recommendation is for the board to approve the purchase of a new maintenance truck from Newman Chevrolet for $59,064.50. This truck will replace the current 2014 Ford F-350 used by the district. This request has not gone through the Buildings and Grounds Committee because the original intent was to fix the current vehicle. After reviewing all the items that needed to be fixed, it was determined that a replacement was a better option, and Kim is here to discuss that, I think. Board, answer questions.
Yeah, so I'll speak a little bit to it more just because we haven't spoken about this in committee yet, but the truck is, as Dr. Clark said, 2014 Ford F-350, which is used by our Maintenance Department for plowing and a number of maintenance items. It had needed some bodywork for a long period of time, I think over $7,000 in bodywork, but just recently it's, a noise started, right? And he's the more technical one, so Rick is here to answer specific technical questions, but they took it to the shop. Yeah, and quoted us over $11,000 to just fix it, and it was a pretty old truck. And Newman, who has the winning bid, three bids were gotten over the past couple of weeks, and Newman, who has the winning bid, has the truck on the lot. So we're able to replace it, and we will look to sell our current truck, and Rick has some interested parties for that as well. Are there any other questions before I ask a handful? Okay, thank you. Was there an approximate of what the older vehicle might go for if sold?
$15.
Okay. And I did, I did speak with our Director of B&amp;G before this meeting, and I'm torn on this one, not because I don't think there's a need, not because I don't trust that this is accurate information, but just because items generally do go to committee, especially if it's an expense like this. I'm feeling some internal strife. So I will ask our board president when we do this vote to just do a roll call vote, so I have a little bit more time to make a decision. But did you take a look at any of our policies or have any thoughts on whether we are, if there's any issue, anything that stops us, prohibits the board from taking an action regarding expense before it goes through a committee?
Nope.
Okay.
Any other question?
Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, I'll take a motion to, regarding the purchase of a new maintenance truck.
I would make a motion to approve the purchase of the new maintenance truck as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have one quick, totally obvious. It's going to be purchased outright, correct? Yes.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, we will take a roll call vote. Dr. Savagio?
Aye.
Mrs. Charlin?
Aye.
Mrs. Metzl?
Aye.
Mrs. Strobel is a aye. Ms. Erickson?
Aye.
Ms. Kincaid?
Abstain.
Okay. Mr. Aaron.
Been a long day. Mr. Dumbcheck.
All right, I guess you were a nay or an aye, Connie?
I, yeah, I can't go back on my vote, so.
Okay, so the motion passes 6-0-1. Thank you.
All right. The second recommendation is for the board to approve the 2025-26 Special Education Model Procedures. It is required that the board approve a special education model annually. The proposed model is the same model the board has approved the last three years. Ms. Amison is here to answer any questions regarding the model.
Oh, there she is.
Are there any questions, board?
So I'm assuming because this is the same as the last three years, there are no new state or federal statutes that we need to work into this?
Yes, that's correct.
I had a quick question. So we had discussed in the past school year, the new like special education classroom in Thorson and that model, so nothing in here needed to get updated with that new program?
Nope, that's just a district sponsored program, so.
Yes.
Any further discussion, or otherwise I'll entertain a motion to approve the Special Education Handbook as presented.
So moved. I will second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the Special Education Handbook as presented, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion. All right, then I will take a vote on approving the Special Education Handbook as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The third recommendation is for the board to approve the 2025-26 Teacher Negotiation Proposed Resolution as presented. This proposal will provide all returning teachers a 2% increase on their 2024-25 base wages in the amount of $269,690. Kim is here to answer questions if you have any.
So looking at the resolution, just so the community is aware, this was an impasse. This was not something that the Cedarburg Education Association was in agreement with, correct?
Correct, it's an impasse. Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 25-26 Teacher Negotiations Proposal, Proposed Resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to point out my disappointment in the essential lack of negotiations. Having not been at the meeting, I am aware of what happened, speaking with people who were in attendance that are able to publicly speak on what was going on. It is disappointing that CPI was not met again, especially considering what's coming up on the agenda where we're looking at staff and administrators receiving a 3% increase. So I would like to ask in the future that negotiations actually be negotiations and that the board not just walk into a meeting with one option and one option only. I just wanted to add, just so that the community is aware, that this is not the only piece of the compensation that teachers will receive. So when you're hearing the 2%, the next item we're voting on will add to that.
Okay, any other discussion?
I would just ask that we have a roll call one on this one as well.
Okay. So any other discussion? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Dr. Savagio?
Aye.
Mrs. Charlin?
Aye.
Mrs. Metzl?
Aye.
Laura Strobel is a aye. Ms. Erickson?
No.
Ms. Kincaid?
Nay.
Mr. Dumbcheck?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes 5 to 2. Thank you.
All right. The next recommendation is for the board to approve supplemental teacher compensation increases as presented. This proposal will provide all returning teachers a 2% increase on their 2024-25 supplemental wages. It also It also provides an additional supplemental performance-based increase of $1,000 for teachers rated as distinguished, $750 for teachers rated as highly effective, and $500 for teachers rated as effective. The total package is for $214,000, $214,644 with an aggregate percentage increase of 3.13%. Again, Kim is here to answer any questions.
Kim, could you remind me what the total that would have been spent if it was just a flat 2.95 rather than 2.0 for the base increase?
Uh, 15 million, is that what you mean? Or you mean the total increase?
Total increase.
$456,957.
Could you say it one more time?
It's not equivalent to this because that includes base and supplemental.
Right, okay. And then what was, what's our potential total if it goes through like this?
Uh, $484,084.
Okay.
I believe.
I remember one was more than the other.
Correct.
It was about $25,000 more.
Correct.
So your numbers are along the line of what I'm remembering offhand.
Correct, because the aggregate is 3.13% and you're asking about 2.95, which is CPI.
Yes. So, you know, from my perspective, I, I mean, I did attend the meetings, stayed for as long as I could. I was a member of our negotiations committee last year, so I'm familiar with that process. And from, from my perspective, you could look at this a couple of different ways. The district is spending more money in this potential situation. But it, it is not equally allocated, right? And I do think that there's the perspective of performance-based being positive and perhaps not viewing that as a positive incentive. So for, for myself, from feedback that I get, I certainly don't hear from everybody all over the place, but I'm not a really big fan of our current system of distinguished, highly effective, effective. And so this won't be getting a yes from me, possibly for different reasons and other people on this, at this table. But I do appreciate the effort that, you know, you guys have gone through. But I do think there is, I just want to state that it's, it's not my preference for us to continue the distinguished, highly effective, effective and the measurements for that. The, it's just a lot and it's, again, you could look at it different ways. Some people would be really glad that Cedarburg does it different and goes through all this and other people wouldn't. And I'm in that second category, given what our numbers are from the state at this point and what we have coming up in the next couple of years, so that's it.
Thank you, Connie, and I appreciate that perspective. I, I guess I would say I historically, you know, before I was a member on this board, they have worked hard to include that performance-based element. And I feel it is, is an important element of our pay structure and so forth that we even decided to go over what was in the budget to make it, to make sure we could provide somewhat of a a meaningful, and I put that in quotations, value to whether you were distinguished, highly effective or effective. So I just wanted to add my point on that.
I echo what Laura says. I believe that as a board, we had originally budgeted for an overall 2.95% increase and where we ended up was an average 3.13% increase.
We budgeted for 3.
Yeah. Yeah, and then that we were like, what, $25,000, $27,000 over what we had originally budgeted? And that was to be able to, you know, give that kind of more substantial increase where distinguished teachers, which is the actually biggest, you know, if you look at how many teachers are in which category, you have more teachers in distinguished than any other one, which is the highest rating, that those teachers all get an extra $1,000. And I think that's a positive and, you know, rewarding, what an awesome and excellent job those teachers did. And then the highly effective getting 750, which is great, too. So I was pretty pleased where we ended up with this and I'm glad that we were able to go a little bit over budget to, to do that, so. Just wanted to share. Just to tie in as one of the few board members that actually are educators and do teach.
Kim, I can't hear you when you're sitting next to me.
So as one of the few board members that actually teaches and is an educator and has to go through these things, negotiations, you know, with my own employer, I am going to reiterate my stance that I find it disingenuous that negotiations aren't actual negotiations and that we have noneducators on a board deciding the best ways to pay our teachers and staff while not entering into meaningful negotiations with those teachers who have come back with reasonable counteroffers. Yeah, that's my two cents.
And these supplemental, they're not, they're not, actually, never mind, Kim, we're fine. I'm fine. Thank you.
Are there any other comments, discussion? I will entertain a motion to approve the supplemental teacher compensation increases as presented.
I will make a motion to approve the 25-26 supplemental teacher compensation.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Further, any further discussion?
A request for roll call, please.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote to approve the supplemental teacher compensation increases for the 25-26 school year as presented. Dr. Savagio?
Aye.
Mrs. Charlin?
Aye.
Mrs. Metzl?
Aye.
Laura Strobel is a aye. Ms. Erickson?
No.
Ms. Netz, Ms. Kincaid?
Nay.
Mr. Demcheck?
Aye.
Okay, the motion to approve the supplemental teacher compensation increases as presented for the 25-26 school year passes 5 to 2. Thank you.
All right, the next recommendation is for the Board to approve support staff and administrator compensation increases as presented. This proposal is for a 3% increase for administrators in the amount of $68,949 and a 3% increase for support staff in the amount of $151,909. Again, Kim is available for questions.
I, I'm, I likely missed the PNF when this went through, right? This would have gone through PNF before coming here.
It was part of the preliminary budget.
Right, okay, so.
It's discussed. June PNF and then the June.
It would have been, okay, yeah. So was there any discussion at that committee meeting of separating out administrator from our, where is the wording?
Like exempt?
Support staff.
Support staff, yes.
Uh, no.
Okay, not that I'm aware. I don't, do you remember? Okay, so no, no members of the PNF back in June before our budget was finalized from our state numbers asked about having potentially a 2% increase for admin to, to, just different numbers that never came up?
Not that I recall.
Okay, so could someone just remind me or inform me how we got to those specific numbers? The ones that are recommended here?
The 3%?
Correct.
Yep. Uh, we budgeted 3% for all staff.
For everyone, okay. That's, that's helpful. I appreciate that, okay. So, and, and that, do, does anyone recall for the vote on that one? Was, were all board members present at that June meeting?
There wasn't a vote on that at all. It was just preliminary information.
Oh, okay.
Vote to, it would have been a vote to approve the preliminary budget.
Right.
So it was in, included in the budget.
I, I understand what you're saying. I just didn't remember this. So it's possible that's the meeting that I missed. I just don't remember, so, yeah, I have a hard time with this one just based on what we just did previously. So I, I'm not decided yet at this table, so I will be requesting a roll call vote for a little bit more time.
Having, you know, being a member of PNF, had had I known ahead of time that 2% was what we were going to go with, I wouldn't have agreed to 3. I would have said 2 max to keep things in line because I do believe it's extremely unfair to give a flat 3% with no, you know, performance pay. Looking at, okay, how are we retaining our staff? How are things going, whatnot? If, if something like that was mixed in, so. Yeah, that's my point of view on it. Kim, with the teacher compensation that we just voted on, there aren't any teachers that are getting that flat 2%. Like even the teachers who are at that effective level getting the $500 performance increase get, what, 2.8, 2.9, somewhere? It's like an average amount, like it's not, like I don't think that you could say, oh, we wouldn't give support staff and admin 2% if there's teachers getting 2% because an overall compensation, no, there aren't teachers getting only a 2% raise. Is that fair to say?
The lowest eligible teacher is receiving 2.6%. There is one teacher on needs improvement and that would, that teacher would be getting a 2%. But that's not qualifying for the re, for performance base.
Comparing apples to apples and not apples to oranges, apples to apples is 2% CPI versus 3% CPI.
DPI is 2.95, but you mean a 2%?
It's 2% that was for teachers and we're looking at 3% for administrators and support staff. So if you're comparing apples to apples and looking at only CPI, it's 2% versus 3%.
If 2% was to the base wage, was that correct?
To the base and supplemental, which means to the total, total wage is 2% plus performance-based bonuses. I think that's what you're getting, too.
But in negotiations, it was 2% on the base wage, is that correct?
That's what, that's what we're allowed to negotiate on is the portion of the salary that is base wage.
Right, so there would really be hard to ever be apples to apples because there's the base wage, the supplemental wage, and, you know, there's so many pieces in here, correct?
There are different groups that we provide salaries to in a different manner, yes.
There are, but again, CPI versus CPI, it's 2% versus 3%. No matter what other fluff you throw in, it's 2% CPI versus 3% CPI.
I guess they see it differently, but we all can see it, I guess, in the manner that we do and that's why there's seven of us and I don't think we have a motion. We can either take, have further discussion now or I will take a motion to approve the supplemental teacher compensation increases as presented.
A motion to approve the support staff and administrator compensation increases as presented?
Second.
Sorry, I'm on the wrong item here. I have a motion and a second to, to approve the 25-26 compensation for support staff and administrators of a 3% increase. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the, the motion that's on the floor to change CPI for our administrators to 2.5% and for our support staff to remain at 3%.
I would second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to amend the motion to change the administrator increase to 2.95 and the support.
2.5.
2.5, okay, I wrote down 2.95. 2.5, sorry about that. And then the support staff at 3%. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I, I hear various perspectives at this point and when it comes down to it, I do, I do believe our, we have some great administrators. I believe we have great teachers. I believe we have excellent support staff. And I don't, I, I'm also very cognizant of what was happening at the start of the year with money, numbers from the state level and what was approved, what is going to districts and the priority of a majority of this board to have money in a different area, no matter what. So this is my attempt to say, I still want to acknowledge our administrators. I understand that there's different views at this table for CPI and supplemental. And I do not think our support staff should be, like, support staff is not easy to come by. So I don't think that's a number that we decrease in, at all. So I do appreciate just kind of hearing where things were at in June, why that number was what it was. I appreciate the history of hearing, no, we didn't have a vote on it then. It was inform, it was information. A lot has happened between June and now. So again, my, what's on the floor is my hope that we can have something in the middle that, that meets all of our objectives here. Thank you.
I just want to add that there's so much discussion around that CPI number. Our administrators don't have any supplemental and, and what we just voted on gave the teachers an aggregate of 3.13. I don't think it's out of line to keep our administrators at 3.0 to maintain the team that we have in our district. I think that's important. So I guess that's my perspective on it. Respectfully, we also do look at market adjustments for our administrators as well as pay increases regularly. It's difficult to look at that for the large number of faculty and staff that we have, but with the small number of administrators, we do regularly look at their salaries and increase them and make sure that they are commiserate with those around us. So I see nothing wrong with dropping down to 2.5 or even 2% because they are already well-paid.
You know, that's below the cost of living raise.
We also have faculty and staff that haven't had their individual salaries looked at for market adjustments individually according to their education level and whatnot. We have a lot of people who've been here for a long time that have quite a few advanced degrees and aren't making what they should be making. So unless we're going to go through and look at each individual faculty and staff member, I don't think this is fair.
I mean, as I recall, we do, we do make market adjustments for teachers as well. So I don't think that's completely ignored or off the table.
Is, is that accurate for this year, Dr. Clark?
Uh, yes, actually, the next, we've, we've done that once past year. We'll have, have more coming soon.
Correct, the 3.13 aggregate group increase for teachers does not include market adjustments, but there will be market adjustments made on top of that for specific teachers.
Right, so I think that's the part where, again, we're going to look at this differently at this table. My, my hope is in thinking of the money that's coming in, what's coming out, thinking of who's on our staff, where maybe that can be caught up. I, like, I, I, I think that we could make it work at 2.5. I think we have administrators that would understand because they're also very familiar with where the money is coming from, where it's going. And that, that's my hope anyway, that there's a positive relationship, that no one is listening to me offer 2.5 and thinking I don't care about them. So I understand 2.5 is not 2.95. I do understand that.
I'm in, what, Laura, did you have something? No, go ahead. I was just going to say that I'm in favor personally keeping it at the 3.0 as presented. I think overall as a district, we're pretty lean in terms of how many administrators we have. I think it's a major issue in some other school districts that have huge bloat with administrators. I think the district's been pretty good at keeping that number reasonable. This is what was budgeted for. I heard an argument that support staff's hard to find, so we should keep it at 3 for them. I think a good administrator is hard to find and you could look at filling some past positions in the last year where they've had to go, you know, post at the end because they didn't get enough good applicants the first time. So I support the 3%.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, I have, we are going to vote on the amendment to, let's see, approve a 2.5% increase for administrators and a 3% increase for support staff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, the amendment fails 2 to 5. So we have the original motion on the table. What, is there further discussion?
Uh, so if we're over budget and the board has, the major, excuse me, the majority of the board has prioritized one fund of money and always keeping it at a certain dollar amount. Do we have time before our next, the October, the October is when our amount, we have time before our next, the October, the October is when our meeting is for the final, final budget, correct? Right, for voting on that?
The budget year. And then the meeting following after that.
Okay, oh, that's right, it's two, two different days, right? Monday and Wednesday?
What the plan is, is to bring the budget to the September, bring an estimated budget to the September PNF committee?
Okay.
To have the PNF committee review, and I think that's what we've done in previous years. And then we get our final numbers in October, actually, I don't get final, final numbers until October 15th.
Right.
And then October 16th, turn that around into the budget for the PNF committee once again to vote to approve a motion to pass that to the full board in October.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's a bar.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, let, we will take a vote on approving the support staff and administrator compensation at a level of 3% for the 25-25 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes five to two. Thank you.
All right, the last recommendation this evening is for the board to approve the following donations. $241,000 in monetary and in-kind donation from the Parkview PTO to support the new Parkview Elementary School playground. $30,000 from Jack W. Kellner to support the Cedarburg High School golf simulator. $8,593.50 from the William E. La Makia to support the Cedarburg High School golf simulator. $4,090 from the Cedarburg Basketball Club to support the Cedarburg High School Boys' basketball program. $4,000 from, I think it's Melio Solutions Incorporated to support the Cedarburg High School Athletics Program. And $10,000 from Orthopedic Hospital of Wisconsin to support the Cedarburg High School Athletics Program. Total donations for August would be $307,683.50, and the total donations to date for the 2025-26 school year would be $322,683.50.
I think you missed, it's a $10,000 donation from William E. La Makia, and then a $8,593.50 donation from the Cedarburg Athletic Club.
I did miss that, thank you for catching that.
Just making...
Okay, this is $322,000 before the first day of school.
Yeah, pretty amazing.
Very amazing. So I will take a motion to approve the donations to support the instructional program, programmatic needs of Cedarburg School District.
I will make the motion to approve.
I will...
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Uh, I want to say thank you to everybody that made so many donations, but I will be abstaining due to item number one. So, nothing personal.
And again, yeah, just echo, the entire meeting tonight just shows what a generous community we have. We have a lot to be grateful for. So on that, I will entertain, or we will take a vote to approve the, let's see, the donations to support the instructional and programmatic needs of the Cedarburg School District. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, we, the vote passes six to one. Thank you.
Six zero one.
Six zero one, thank you.
And that concludes the recommendation portion of the meeting.
Okay. Hi, so I am going to just cover, we had two negotiations committee meetings on July 28th. As we highly value our educators, we met to discuss various scenarios to prepare for negotiations with the Cedarburg Education Association. Included in those discussions were possible scenarios to maximize increases while remaining close to the budget and retaining a performance-based element that the, that the district has historically given to our educators. And then at the August 7th negotiation committee meeting, we did enter into negotiations with the Cedarburg Education Association to determine what the base wage increase up to CPI would be for the 25-26 school year. Although we were not able to reach a voluntary settlement agreement, I do, on behalf of the committee, want to thank the CEA for their commitment to the negotiations process, and I want to reiterate the value our educators bring to the district. That's what I have for those two meetings. So at that, we're going to adjourn into executive session, and so I believe we need a roll call vote. I need a motion, right? We have to read off the...
Read off the motion. What were we doing?
Oh, forget it, hang on. Okay. We are going to move into executive session to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility pursuant to 19.851(c) of the Wisconsin statutes. We're going to consider administrator contracts and consider the superintendent's annual evaluation. It is anticipated the board may reconvene into open session and may take action on one or more of these executive session items. And then, okay, and also the approval of the executive session minutes from June 18th, 2025. So at this time, I will take a roll call to adjourn into executive session. Dr. Savagio?
Oh, yeah.
Do we need a motion on that?
No, I just, um, do we, are we allowed to discussion right before that, or Dr. Clark?
Uh...
I don't remember if there's discussion after roll call vote, because people would have voted by then.
Yeah, so we'll first need a motion, and then a second, and then we can do the...
Okay, thank you.
The motion, then the discussion. So we do need a motion.
All right, do I have a motion to enter executive session?
I motion to adjourn into executive session.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session, discussion?
Uh, thanks, yep. So there was a community member that brought up whether, or asked whether this was noticed with enough detail, basically, for the public. I'm torn on, I'm torn on that. I see, obviously, what we all see, that the community doesn't in our attached documents, but I'll be voting no to go into closed session, just because I'm, I'm a little on the fence. So I'm still allowed to go into closed session, I'm still allowed to participate, but just to be on the safe side, I'll be voting no.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Dr. Savagio?
Aye.
Mrs. Charlin?
Aye.
Mrs. Netzel?
Aye.
Laura Strobel? Aye. Ms. Erickson?
No.
Ms. Kincaid?
Nay.
Mr. Demcek?
Aye.
Okay, it is approved to go into executive session five to two. Thank you.